Mr Fairness Thompson will join us and we will do this one. Ian, this is September. Welcome in. Right, landfill charges. Mr Fairness Thompson, would you like to just put a bit of context here? Would you like to go round the questions?
Through the chair. From the meeting, from the draft annual plan, and since the annual plan has been out for consultation, we've conducted a bit more work around the landfill charges and we had put a lot more vehicles over the waybridge to confirm our charges that we had submitted in the annual plan and to compare whether the waybridge option was going to benefit more people as we had indicated in the report in February. It's confirmed that and it's also given us a much larger dataset to make those assumptions on. And part of that process was to check whether the $130 per ton for the general waste that was intimated in the annual plan, draft annual plan, sorry, was sufficient. And from our data that we gathered, it clearly highlighted that there was going to be quite a shortfall, something around 13% or $467,000 potentially. So we've now recommended that we increase the general solid waste charge to $145 a ton and also the green waste charge to $100 per ton for full green waste and for mixed loads that have part green waste and part general waste, up to $115 a ton. And also the cost of the waybridge has been analysed a bit more and confirmed at around $110,000, lower than the $150,000 that was initially indicated. So the staff certainly recommend carry on with installation of a second waybridge.
Questions, councillors? councillor Noon.
I see in the report, Ian, there's really no mention about submitters raising the issue about as landfill charges go up, illegal disposal of waste in wherever they can find an area to put it. There's no mention in the report. And I'm just a little bit concerned because I think, I understand why you want to make your budget balanced, but there is a trade-off. And I suppose my question is, why isn't that sort of not mentioned in the report? Because it was certainly raised by submitters.
I think through the work that we did, that we're discovering that more than 63% of the customers coming in would actually be better off. So I think people that feel that their charges were going to be higher will in fact find that they are lower for the smaller loads. So they may find that they're actually on the better off side.
So you're confident that if we were of a mind to support the introduction of an additional waybridge, that the net benefit to 60%, the majority, or 60%, would actually be better off financially and it would actually discourage illegal dumping? That's what you're saying?
Yes, and a lot of the larger loads are actually commercial loads that come in through the transfer station as well. So those ones will probably have the opportunity to recover some of those costs.
Thank you. councillor Lord.
Yeah, Ian, I've got a concern around the price of the green waste. Not a user of the tip, but I have had constituents question me about the price. And I feel a degree of sympathy with one lady who rang me. She's got a very large street frontage which she mows for the DCC. It's not her grass. She doesn't get any benefit except the exercise of mowing it. And that's the biggest part of her waste. She recycles, she said she does everything else. Takes very little, but she has to dispose of that grass at the tip. And it just seems to me that for a product that's promptly being recycled, or if not recycled for sale, at least it's inert and it breaks down eventually into something nice, which plastic milk bottles that aren't recycled or anything else doesn't. You know, I just have a concern about that. I would, I guess you guys have done your figures, but can you explain why you can dump general waste, which could include paint or batteries or all sorts of horrible products for $145, but you pay $100 to dump green waste? And I would also add that a lot of people do compost, but for some people, and this lady in particular that rang me, it's mostly stones and stuff. She doesn't have room to compost, so.
We revisited the cost of the green waste and the compost process and we found that the charges that we've proposed there cover the cost of the composting operation. As has been demonstrated in the last couple of reports, over 50% of the green waste that is collected ends up in the landfill because it's not suitable for composting.
With the money for the compost products that you sell, does that come off the value of the green waste supplied? Or does that just get used in other areas of the business?
The whole, there's no set separate budget area for composting. It's all part of the operation. But when we've done the numbers with looking at the incoming revenue from the charges of compost, our green waste drop-off and following that right through the process to what it's sold for, it's cost neutral.
So there is no return?
No, it's just covering the costs.
Just covering the costs. So you don't think you make any profit out of selling that product at all?
No, appears not to be.
Should that be something that you should price a wee bit higher then? So that you can reduce the cost of the green waste? Are we underselling it too cheap?
Well, there are obviously other centres that sell compost as well. So there's obviously, we're at the lower end of the market for compost sales. So it would be something that could be looked at.
councillor Wilson.
I have a huge angst dealing with this at late notice. And I'm really disappointed this information wasn't available for consultation because I find it unfair. So I've got a real issue when we've got a whole of submitters who may have submitted more on this or many more submitters who haven't come up and given their ideas because they weren't given the opportunity because we didn't have this detail. So process-wise, and I'm not criticizing anyone in particular for that, it's just, it's fraught. And it means, what's also missing here is that I don't understand comparative costs because I haven't had a chance, given the quantity of papers we've had in the last few weeks, while to compare it to the other costs of other services in the town. Because if these are much higher and hopefully the effect will not be that it is dumped, but that it goes to another supplier, then actually the losses could be substantially higher to our landfill. And that doesn't seem to, I think, from my reading of this, been assessed. So I'm not sure that we're actually in a position to make a decision today because it lacks that robustness. And I, but why haven't we got that information? Do we know what the charges are at the other places for these same quantities? And same type of landfill charges?
In Dunedin City or in other centres?
In Dunedin City. What is the commercial competitors, if you want to put it that way, rates?
I don't know off the top of my head, but they generally are about the same as ours.
So the effect of doing this might would be that we wouldn't necessarily get the waste and therefore we'll have those costs stranded anyway?
Potentially.
Thank you.
Can I just jump in there and ask if you're aware, I don't know the answer to this, whether the private operators charge on the same basis, not the price, on the same basis? And is it, are we able to compare or not? Because I'm, we think, this is recommending, as per our previous discussions, going to a weight-based system. And I'm not sure that I'm, whether the private operators work on that system or whether they work on a volume system or.
The private operator has a single waybridge and runs their commercial vehicles over the waybridge and domestics.
So they're.
Not always over the waybridge, large trailers, similar to ours.
Right, so they do it the same way?
Yep.
Right, councillor Thompson. Did you have something to add to that, councillor Cowan?
Well, I was just going to say that the things that were given to us, with a waybridge, without a waybridge, were much the same one way or the other. So you ought to be able to compare most of the costs in there with a competitor or somebody else.
Yeah, no, sure, I'll put it there. Councillor Thompson.
My question's more around a presentational aspect. Actually, if we approve this, and noting that I was the sole decenter on the waybridge, as I recall, but if we do approve this, the headline in the paper is going to be, council agrees to raise tip costs even more than they originally raised them. And in relationship to councillor Noon's question, the message is going to be not that 63% of people are going to be able to drop their stuff cheaper, but that it just got a lot more expensive to take their stuff to the tip. So I'm wondering if you've thought through how you would intend to manage that message? Because it strikes me as being quite an important message. Or we are going to see increased illegal dumping.
Most of the general public that don't go over the waybridge will obviously be in a better position. And it'll be those that have always been weighed over the waybridge that would be the ones that would feel the effects of the increase.
Yeah, no, I know that, that's not the point. My point is, what is your, how are you going to get that message out there? Because that's not the message that's going to get conveyed in, I imagine, no disrespect to our media colleagues, but in the sub-editor's headline.
We'll obviously have a campaign, an advertising campaign to explain the charges.
councillor Cowan.
Several questions. From trying to put these things side by side with the waybridge, without a waybridge, it seems to me that almost all of them, the proposals are the same increase either way. So the waybridge doesn't seem to be having any much effect on that, except that some commercial operators' prices will be put up even more than everyone else's. Is that, am I right about that as a proposal?
Through, Sir Eamonn, the basis for attachment two, which is I think if a second waybridge is not installed, and attachment one, which is for those, if you attach, if you do put a waybridge in there, all the other landfills that don't have a waybridge, the charges between the sites that wouldn't have a waybridge and Green Island, where they're putting a waybridge, are the same. So the charge per vehicle, half vehicles, those sorts of things are the same in attachment two and attachment one? Because there are some landfills where there isn't, or there are some facilities where there isn't a waybridge. So that is consistent between the two. If you put a waybridge in there, you've got to put in a charge obviously per ton. So I'm not entirely sure I've answered your question because I'm not entirely sure what your question is, sorry.
Well, we've got two pages that say if a second waybridge is installed and if a second waybridge is not installed. And they're pretty much the same lists in both cases.
They're the same. If you look at attachment one, partway down there, landfill charges for all DCC landfills and transfer stations without waybridges, all the fees from that point on are the fees that would apply to any landfill or facility that didn't have a waybridge. So if you decide not to put a waybridge in at Green Island, those are the fees that would apply. So they are entirely consistent, well, they should be entirely consistent between the two.
So if 60% of people would be financially better off, does that mean putting a waybridge in has the effect of reducing the money we would get? Or the other, when you say 60%, is that by number? And therefore what we're doing is effectively charging the other 40% more, more than we're getting less from the 60%?
Well, as I understand.
They were better off.
As I understand, and I look to Ian or Laurie, under both scenarios, attachment one with a waybridge or attachment two without a waybridge, the revenue that's projected remains the same for both scenarios. The difference is that under, if you have a waybridge, there would be 60% of the people that come across the waybridge that would end up paying less than if they paid one of the standard fees and therefore there'd be 40% that would pay more. As I understand it, though, the revenue between the two projections is the same. It's just how you then, or how we then allocate those fees.
So if the revenue is the same either way, there is no amount in there which is intended to reflect that we've just spent $110,000 on a waybridge? That's just sort of sunk money that we've spent for now?
No, the, as is noted in the report, the hundred, we're not asking for an additional $110,000. It would be found out at the landfill capital programme by deferring, I think, planting and other work. So there is no additional cost within the budget for the waybridge. It's accommodated within the overall budget.
Well, except that.
Sorry, I'm trying to respond to questions, but.
Oh, excuse me, sir chief, can I just make comment? The difference is, Hillary, that if we have a waybridge, everybody pays their fair share. If we don't have a waybridge and people get charged on estimates, some people are paying less and some people are paying more, which is perceived as not fair. If you put a waybridge in, irrespective of the charges, people pay according to what they've dumped.
Wet or dry.
Wet or dry.
Out of discussion. So bring that up at the end of discussion.
So if we didn't, if that's the effect of a waybridge, not that it has any economic effect to the overall position, we're still, I presume, if we didn't put in a waybridge, that that $110,000 is therefore money we could spend here? Because you're confident that it can be dealt with within budgets? And therefore, if you didn't spend it, we would have that $110 to spare that we could do other things with?
No, I think, as has been reported in the last, previously, and as I think in email correspondence with you, the proposal's to defer planting and other things that are presently within the budget, which will need to be caught up in future years.
Yes, but having deferred that this year, we've then got $110,000. If we deferred that beyond our 10-year cycle, we've got $110 we could spend on something else this year.
Well, you'd have to make that decision if you wanted to retain that $110,000. But noting that, certainly in terms of the instructions to all staff, was if you wanted to increase expenditure, we need to find out of existing budgets. In this case, it's being found out of an existing capital budget, as I understand it, which does have implications. There's not, there's not, without some pain in doing that. And so it is a deferment. And Ian will be able to tell you more detail than I can about what that would mean. But in response to the request to investigate waybridges, we didn't come back and so we wanted, were looking for another $110,000, try to fit that within the budget. If you decide you don't want to put a waybridge in and hold on to $110, then that's a decision that you can take. But it's not without implications. As is funding it out of the existing capital, isn't without its implications.
Will the proposed increases, one way or the other, since they're fiscally neutralised between themselves, put us back into the position which we seem to be in? That we were, for want of a better word, making a million dollars or something out of waste?
So, not sure the question?
I thought we had a surplus.
We do have a surplus.
Usually, and will this put us back into the position where we intend to have the same sort of surplus from waste that we'd had in previous years?
Yes, and as is noted in the.
And is that about a million dollars?
No, it's more than a million dollars, I think. It's been previously reported. But the report, I can't from the figure, does note there's an impact of $467,000. If the per ton rate isn't put up, it's just implications of trying to maintain the dividend, which is currently in the year annual plan, which goes into other waste minimisation activities, but also helps reduce the general rate.
Can I just clarify that for my benefit as much as anyone else's? The surplus is generated from the landfill, not from the total of waste services. So the surplus is applied back partially, at least, to other waste services?
Yeah, we did, we've done a report previously which has looked at that and said there is the surplus generated from Green Island, but there are costs associated with the transfer stations and other waste activities. And the net position, when you take all of those things and including waste minimisation, which is another thing, was $400,000? Something like that.
Thank you.
And that's, yeah, the contribution that then goes up.
councillor Lord. No, no, it's okay, I meant my. councillor State.
Just some clarification. So what's concerning me is the shift per ton and how that affects commercial operators. Am I right that for green waste, the increase for a commercial operator is going from $65 a ton to $100 a ton? So that's 54%, that's what you're proposing increase?
Page.
What page are you looking at here?
So, well, I'm looking at two pages. One is 18.3, which has the proposed charges per ton. And the other one is going into 18.7, where it has large vehicles, vegetation, minimum $65 per cubic metre. So it's going from $65 a cubic metre to $100 a ton.
That, that, that different, one's a volume and one's a tonne.
So what actually is, for a commercial operator, for a business that was coming out with a load of green waste, what do they pay now per ton? And what are they going to be paying under the new?
It's in the, in the same, 18.3.
The large operators that would have been coming in would have been weighed over the waybridge. So they were still, they would be paying the, what was $80 a ton. The $65 a cubic metre are for the smaller places that don't have waybridges. So they'll be lots of Wacka Waiiti and if they came into the transfer station at Middlemarch.
I still don't quite understand. On the chart, 18.3, it shows 13, 14 as having zero charge for green waste. The proposal in our consultation was for $80. The new proposal is for $100.
That was, we had a, our green waste charge was for 50% or more was considered green waste. We're getting a lot of vehicles that are coming in with a skim coat of green waste on it and saying that they've got all vegetation, or sorry, mixed loads. And they're predominantly general solid waste, so they were getting a cheaper rate. So we brought in this 100% green waste. So it's totally green waste and that will all get diverted to the green waste area.
So it's a new charge.
But my effect, the question I asked was, if I'm a commercial operator arriving with a load of totally green waste, okay? Today?
Yep.
What do I pay per ton?
$100, today?
Today.
$80 a ton.
$80 a ton and we're, so we're increasing it to $100 a ton?
25% increase.
Because it doesn't have any charge, but 13, 14 at all.
So I think, just talking with Ian to clarify, on page 18.6, there's a fee there for mixed load per ton, which is $80. And as I understand from what Ian's just said.
So 25% increase is being proposed.
Yes, although the, what I think Ian has said is that when people brought in some green waste on top of a load, they were charged a mixed rate. And so that, that mixed rate, and remember, we're having some difficulties with being able to have charges that reflected the different types of loads. So as I understand from what Ian's saying, we've introduced a new charge for solely green waste and upped the cost for the mixed loads. Back to the point around the vegetation per cubic metre, that's at the non-waybridge facilities and I note that that would still be $65 per cubic metre according to this. So certainly the commercial green waste operators, and I'm thinking of Mr Greens and others, their charges potentially would go up. But I suppose the weight of green waste solely as opposed to mixed, a mixed trailer will be different, so. But the charges will presumably be forwarded on to whoever generated those charges. So Mr Green comes in, I've actually had a, my garden comes in every periodically, he's passed on the landfill charges across the waybridge and said, told me already that they're likely to go up.
councillor Hawkes.
Thank you, Bishop. The 37% to 40% of people will be charged more according to this new schematic and not the table on 18.4, breaking that down by vehicle. Do we have information about how proportional these vehicles are? So out of that 37%, you know, how many will be nominally charged more and how many will be substantially charged more? And those sorts of things, rather than just a plus or minus figure? Seems blunt.
These were just the average charge, sorry, the highest and the lowest. Otherwise, the report would get quite convoluted and quite detailed. But again, it's the conversion from the law of averages of where we're taking the average weight in the past and that's what we've been working things out on. And there's obviously, you can either have a few at a very high amount and a lot of it spread out underneath it to get your average. There are various ways of getting the average. It really depends on the mix, how you get your average. So we've just highlighted what was the highest and the lowest weights.
I understand that, I just, it would be good to know if we had any data on how many vehicles are cars and how many are station wagons and how many are trailers?
Yeah, I've got that information.
Can we get that?
Include that.
And one of the submissions raised the concern around operational costs. That wasn't addressed as far as I'm aware in the report though. But what are the operational implications of the waybridge?
Just annual certification and they're very low maintenance.
No staffing issues?
No, no, the same person's used in the booth, so there's no issues there.
councillor Van Ness.
The raising of the prices, is there a percentage of that price rise that is going to essentially pay for long-term landfill remediation or for the costs associated with a new landfill when this one runs out? Are we, are we pricing with a view to the costs, not just of now, but long-term into account as well?
Yes, the operational costs, we put aside money for aftercare of landfill.
Okay, and have there been any changes in those aftercare costs? Because I believe that they are quite considerable and has there been any movement in the expectation of what those are?
Over the years, we did a review two years ago and the amount being paid has been reduced compared to what was paid for the previous five or six years.
So they're not seen as so onerous currently?
No.
Okay, I was just, we had a figure we needed to generate in terms of cash at one point to then pay it down. That's been reviewed a couple of times in the last probably seven or eight years, trying to make sure that we're making appropriate provision for those aftercare costs. And then the funding of that is then goes into the financial system around how we fund that into the future. We've tried to be as realistic as we can. Just coming back to the second part of your question though, that fund doesn't provide funds for future landfill decisions or future landfill investigations. That's a separate item, that isn't funded. Okay, so we've got aftercare funded, but the requirement for a really long-term new landfill not funded? Okay. I was talking to a skip contractor. He's got quite a large business in Auckland recently. And we were talking about the prices of going to landfill. And he would be absolutely delighted to have your new prices down here. Because apparently they are scandalously high up in Auckland. Have you looked at our prices? Um, have you looked at, uh, our prices in comparison with, say, Hamilton, Taronga and Vicagall? I mean, how do we sit into, I, I, in terms of trying to justify really what is a monopoly business? And I think we need to be very careful with our monopolies. Um, have you got that kind of?
I, I had that in a report eighteen months ago. I think I presented it with where we sit in comparison with, um, the other centres. And we tended to be at the bottom end of the market.
Okay, so you're quite comfortable then that we're charging a very reasonable amount, even with these increased charges for the service that we're providing, especially when you consider other centres like in Vicagall, um, Taronga, Hamilton, Christchurch, whatever.
Uh, yes, I do, yeah.
Thanks very much.
Counselor Wilson.
Um, I'm. Tony, you made a comment earlier on about the cost and trying to cover them. But if we lost all of this market because it was cheaper at the other landfills, at privately owned landfills, what is the quantum effect? I mean, there could be a substantial not meeting the budget that way as well.
Uh, well, the budget, um, I'm gonna look to Laura and Ian to confirm, but the budget's based on some assumptions about volumes in obviously. Um, but there's also a correlation with their operational costs, um, which if our volume is less, then our operational costs are less. It's not a direct one for one drop though.
Yeah.
So if there is a movement to the other landfill, because there are two landfills potentially, um, then it will impact on both the revenue and our expenditure and it will, will affect that dividend.
Yeah.
Um, what the other landfill operator might do in response to, um, the DCC putting up its landfill costs is difficult to know. Um, historically and in the past, um, there has been similar movements, um, from our competitor, for whatever reason. Um, and if you go to their transfer station, you look at our Green Island costs, historically they've always been on a similar sort of basis. So whether they did anything or not, it's difficult to say. Whether that impacted on where people took their, uh, refuse to is difficult to say.
I mean, the, the headline that the mayor referred to would be bad enough. The second, six months later is that we actually put them up even more in order to meet our budget, which would be even worse.
Well, we are in a, unfortunately in terms of our landfill, we are in a competitive service provision situation. Um, there are some uncertainties around those. Uh, we try and manage those as best we can.
Ian, I just, um, were, were the two hundred and fifty vehicles generally over the three days or did you? I just want to understand the rigor of the survey because I don't understand it. There's a one line saying a total of two hundred and fifty small vehicles were weighed over three days. Were those all those small vehicles?
Yes, they were mainly the, the normal vehicles that would have gone through the booth and not been weighed.
Does it?
And that includes cars, just cars with rubbish bags and, and that sort of thing. So I mean, um, and trailers, yutes.
Great. That's great. Then that, that means the question also is, if it was, if it was easy to do then, why can't we just do it with one waybridge all the time?
Well, we, there were, there were several vehicles in the queues that couldn't, um, be bothered waiting to, to weigh out on the way out. So we did lose, um, quite a bit of data from, obviously with only one single waybridge, there was, um, a bit of traffic management to occur.
So how did they pay then?
That we, we only charged them the normal booth rate as if they'd gone through the booth. So they had paid on the way in and we just asked them to come back and weigh out so we could collect that information. So they'd already paid. Whereas with two waybridges, you'd be paying on the way out and there would be no way of escaping getting out without paying.
And certainly operation, if you're gonna, we would need two waybridges.
Um, yeah, I, I, I understand that. I'm, I'm just concerned that we're making our better, better than, it's a better survey than fifty vehicles, but it's still a relatively small survey, not knowing if it's a normal, as a norm, time of, and the quantum of rubbish.
We did two weekdays and we did a Sa- a Saturday as well, so we captured, um, a lot of weekend traffic as well. We didn't feel we could do both days in the weekend because that's, was probably going to cause too much, um, public backlash.
Okay. The other issue I have is just understanding any negative unintended consequences of these rates. Now, the green waste we're charging for because we can't, only on composting costs, as in we get back what we can get and this is the net effect of that, do we take, take the biogas benefits into this equa- equation at all?
No, they get taken through to the, um, wastewater budget lines.
So the general solid waste, do we get, what is the? I'm just wondering why a mixed load per tonne isn't as much as a solid waste because I'm just wondering what the benefits or the difference are. What I'm trying to do is to get people to try and sort their waste as best as possible because that, even in the long term, maybe not captured in the short term, will, will potentially have some benefits.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get people to, to do the same and we have a lot of people that come in and say, well, I've done my recycling at the, um, the recover park, but yet I can then come in and then I have to pay the fixed fee for the, whatever I've got left over.
Yeah.
Um, whereas they will only be paying for the small amount that they have left on their trailer because they're not being, um, applied, they're not having the, the, the average price applied to them. So they're actually then only going to be charged for what they do drop off. So it just becomes fairer on those sorts of people.
I appreciate that. I'm just wondering the, whether the ra- the ratios there are fair and encourage people to mix to, to separate out their last load, that mixed load per tonne. At a hundred and fifteen, I thought should be, I would be far too hard, far, far too much to increase it, but should be more commensurate with a hundred and forty five to encourage that.
Um, well, as I understand it, um, if somebody comes in with a mixed load and, for example, it's got green waste and stuff that they're going to take to the, drop off at the, um, recycling centre, um, they drop off the recycling stuff, they come and get weighed and they pay a hundred dollars per tonne for the green waste. No, would they?
Yeah.
Yes, they would get.
If they had just green waste, yeah.
If they had mixed waste, green waste and other stuff that they weren't going to recycle, then they'd pay a hundred and fifteen.
Which barely looks like it's worth sorting at that. Well, I think it's, it's, it's not a great message at that rate. That, that's fine, thank you.
Counselor Cal.
Two things, um. Is the, in the figures, and I, I may have just missed them, some suggestion of what effect it has on the DCC activities because presumably a lot of, there's a lot of movements of DCC waste of one description or another whose price will go up and therefore we'll be charging ourselves more. So we won't be getting that amount. It's a, do you know what I mean? I'm saying that not only does that lady grass do hurt the lawns outside some places, but quite clearly the DCC has a lot of waste. So, so does it count the fact that we won't get that increased amount or?
Um, I'm not sure. The, the major, the major Dunedin City Council waste cost is the sludges out of the wastewater treatment plants and that's, there's no, that's built into their budgets. In terms of the contractors we might use that mow lawns and things, they would pay whatever the going rate is for everyone else. So that would be incorporated into departments' budgets.
But it hasn't been taken into account that it'll, it'll have a cost within here of taking it off our budgets. If you see what I mean. If we put a, a price to ourselves up, then we've just got to pay it on the other side of ourselves.
Yes, well, the departments would just need to cover that extra cost.
Yeah, but that ha-
I don't know what they-
It hasn't been quantified in any way what effect it will have.
No, it'd be difficult to do because there, we've got our, there's a variety of contractors that do a whole lot of services for a whole range of different departments. So we certainly don't clearly make any distinction for the DCC, um, as a contributor to that. We just, uh, in the solid waste, sorry, uh, wastewater, that's, they've got that in their budgets running around the sludges and that's obviously changed as well with the Tahuna treatment process, what we're doing with sludges, which has had an impact on here. So there's a lot of in and outs of that, but I don't know, Ian, if you know.
Well, it depends how those contracts have been set up, whether they split out the, the waste charges as a separate item. Um, most, I think most of those contracts, they don't have a, a separate, um, charge for that. It's all incorporated in the overall cost of those contracts.
So we just don't know what effect at this point. It might be easy to tell. Um, the other thing is we've heard several times and I'm reminded by Counselor Hawkins, what I heard is skimmation, the skimming across the top of, um, like trailers, I presume it is, people putting green waste along, on the top, pretending it's a green waste thing and underneath is, um, landfill sort of stuff. What evidence do we have of that? What, I mean, with the, clearly there's a, a sort of suggestion, there's a lot of it going on.
It's, it's rife in the commercial sector. I've had several contractors sort of pointing it out to me that, and, and we've seen it. And it's, and it's a, a bit of a flaw in our current charging model. So that's where we're trying to, um, close that, close that loop in it.
Have you, can you tease out a wee bit what rife?
Um, several, several contractors were putting green waste on top of their skips and coming in and claiming the, the mixed load charge, the eighty dollars a, a tonne. Pull off the green waste in the green waste area, then carry on to the tip face and dump the general solid waste load into the, into the tip face.
So do we have any, we don't know how many were doing that or whether there's any other way of stopping them do that?
By having a hundred percent green waste charge, it means that the whole skip load has to be discharged in the green waste area and increasing the mixed, mixed load amount. And they'll find that those weights of the, um, of the, of skip will have an, have the desired impact to make them totally separate their loads so that they are either general solid waste or a hundred percent green waste.
So we've got a solution, but we're not totally sure about the size of the problem. Is that a fair?
Well, I think it's probably a fair assessment. We know that there is a problem. Um, clearly from Ian's knowledge, we've had commercial operators do that. Um, I know anecdotally, I've got a number of friends who have admitted to doing that sort of thing. Um, and part of what Ian is-
That's what I say when I'm referring to myself.
My, my friend. Um, and so that, Ian's explained why there is the introduction of a new green waste charge, which is a hundred percent green waste and why the mixed charge would go up in re- in response to what we are seeing, what's been seen at the landfill. How big of a problem that is, how many don't know, but at least, George, one of the things is trying to refine our current charges to reflect the sorts of, um, things we're seeing at the landfill. At the moment, just having a, a, um, a mixed load um, and no green waste charge, um, doesn't give the right incentive. So we're trying, I think the proposal is to provide refinement around that.
Counselor McTash.
Thank you, Bishop. Um, just two questions and I'm just trying to get my head around potential timing issues in relation to Counselor Thompson's question around perception. Is, given that this is effectively a carry forward budget from this financial year, the, the budget that would be applied to this?
A hundred and ten.
The hundred and ten, yeah. Given that, given that situation, we could make a decision today to install the waybridge, which would mean that, and to use that money which is in this financial year, that would mean that you could install it over the next six weeks, which would mean that the, the new charging regime could come into place on the first of July. Is that, is that right? Is that a possibility given?
Yes, we, the, the numbers have been done and the, the purchase order is just waiting to be generated.
It's not on the budget of the sheet though.
But, but we wouldn't have to carry forward the, the money. We, we're taking the money from the shares budget to carry it forward to then pay for this.
It's, it, just let me finish one. The, the, um, I guess where I'm, where I'm going with it is if we wait, because the other alternative is that we wait until we sign off on this document and then you guys place the purchase order and then we have a part financial year of the old regime and a part financial year of the, or the most of the financial year of a new regime. Is that not right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't know, you wish it, this may be more debate, but my sense is that whatever we choose to do, we should choo- we should choose to do it um, either this financial year to start on the first of July or wait a year and introduce it first of July tw- twenty fifteen. Um, to give clarity for people and to give us a full financial year of one thing, rather than doing it bitsy, so.
You're right, it can be introduced into the debate and to, because I, what I think we'd be interested in is what the implications of each option would be. And, um, you've referred to some of them, but I think we may be out of sync. Counselor State.
Sorry to be a pain, but this time maybe I've got my act a little bit better together. So if we turn to page eighteen point six. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's right up at the top of the page, near the top of the page, general solid waste per tonne is increasing from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty five, so eleven point five percent increase. Your green waste, I would assume your clean green waste would have been charged eighty dollars a tonne prior, because you, you weren't differentiating. So that's increase going from eighty to a hundred, twenty five percent increase. And mixed load is going from eighty to a hundred and fifteen, a forty three point seven percent increase. So those increases are fairly significant for commercial operators because commercial operators are operating there. So my question to you is what percentage of the tonnage going into that landfill is commercial versus residential? And secondly, are the decrease in contribution that will come from residential because they're being weighed and we're expecting them to pay less, is being picked up by the increased charge per tonnage that will go to commercial operators?
We just talked to the analyst in anticipation of this question. Um, and Grant and the analyst, the CFO and the analyst have just talked and yes, the commercial proportion of the waste has been taken into account when setting these new charges, so.
So we have been undercharging commercially as well?
Relative to the volume, volumetric charging for domestic, yes.
Second question, and it's helped by the fact that the largest tonnage that we put into the landfill is sludge. It is interesting to note that there was a zero increase per tonne in sludge. Um, was that because we were charging the correct amount or because we're overcharging and therefore don't need to charge anymore?
I think we were just charging the correct amount.
Counselor Wali.
Thank you. Um, just following a little bit on, um, Counselor State's question and also picking up on something that you said, Tony. Ian, what percentage of the green waste, um, affected commercial in the sense of, you know, the Mr. Greens and things like that?
I'm sorry, I haven't got there with me, sorry.
Okay, um.
I could find out, though.
You made, do you, you talked about skimming and green waste over the top, following up on Counselor McTavish's comment. Um, do you see the Mr. Greens and those sort of operators in that spectrum or is it just the skip operators?
Uh, predominantly the, um, skip operators that do that, but I haven't seen, or haven't spent as much time out there to see that, that part of it. I've seen some of the skip operators doing it myself.
Okay, so we've got a series of, and the reason I'm going down this, uh, line is because I had a couple of people who are commercial, um, Mr. Green type businesses, talking to me about their, uh, dumping and the costs. Is there an ability for the good operators or the, these mid-sized operators or smaller operators to have a discount card? So every time they get their tenth one free or something like that, just to sort of balance out some of the costs?
Well, in, in the, I won't name the specific, but the, the green waste, um, operators such as Mr. Green's Crew Cut, all, all of those, there are instances where those people will turn up to the way, to the, to the booth with a trail load of branches and then insist on being put over the waybridge because they know that they've got light bulky materials and not get charged very much. And when they come in with a, a trail load of, of grass clippings and heavier material and stuff, they insist on going through the booth. So they, um, get the, the lower charge. So, um, putting everybody over a second waybridge, everyone's on the- So putting everybody over a second weighbridge, everyone's on the same level playing field, and everyone's being charged fairly, and it's right across the board. So it just rules out that sort of behaviour. And I know probably some of the people that I've spoken to are really good operators, and it's the rule, some bad operators out there that are obviously trying to get their costs down.
Because one of them made a comment to me, and I know we discussed this last time we talked about weighbridges, with the difference between dry grass clippings and wet grass clippings, and the weight difference, and he goes, he just hated mowing lawns, knowing that he was going to go. Turned up.
Yeah, and I guess that's just a natural, a natural problem.
Councillor P.
Thank you, just two questions. Just on the question of installing the second weighbridge and the cost of that, a hundred and ten dollars, a hundred thousand dollars is the updated cost. And that's a saving of forty, is it?
Ah, yes.
Forty thousand?
Estimate.
Yeah. And if we delayed the installation, have you got any view on that?
No, I think that was more the fact that there was a ballpark figure put as a hundred and fifty thousand, and then as they've gone through and refined supplies and worked out what was required, it's come down to the hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And if we were to do it another year or something, that would be another updated cost, wouldn't it?
I guess if the prices go up in years, potentially.
Thanks. And second question is just on, in terms of the prices that we consulted upon, if we were to hold to those prices and not do the increases that you're suggesting. You've given us a hint of an eighteen point three of what that would result in a reduction, obviously, in revenue. Have you worked it out across those three categories, though, the green and the mixed?
Ah, yes, it was across all the categories, yeah.
Okay. Did I misread that? Oh, yeah. You're talking about the rates stays at one thirty, I thought you were just referring then to the solid, the general waste.
I know the shortfall would be a mix of all of them.
So that figure of four hundred and sixty seven thousand is covering the difference between the rates on the consulted on?
Ah, yes.
Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Bishop. My question's just around, it's following up on councillor Staines's queries with regards to the Tahuna Sludge, and it's currently moved to an incineration process. So the amount that's coming to the landfill has taken off. So what's going to happen in years to come? Are we now at a stage where it's taken off to X and it's going to remain at X? Or what happens in the future because of one of the main suppliers to, for waste going to the landfill? I just want to understand what's happening in the future, or where is it at this point now, so we don't expect to have a real sludge in the future?
That's already been reduced from this year's budget to next year's budget, to reflect the reduction in sludges coming through.
So is it a level in, say, fifteen or sixteen beyond, is that the, is a static level that carries on through at that same?
I think it's been, looking over, I think it's been flatlined at the moment. Yep.
Okay, councillors, what I intend to do now is break, partly because we've overshot lunch break any time anyway, but also staff want to confer with a view to either refining or finding alternative. Given the discussion around the table, there's clearly some anxiety about the options we've got and the implications of them, so staff are going to take the opportunity before we get into discussion to confer and see if they can refine or find alternative options around this issue. So we'll come back to the discussion after lunch, we'll be back.
So I guess one of the key things you need to be aware of is that for the current year-to-date, that the Green Island landfill is unfavorable in revenue terms by about six hundred thousand dollars. Seventy percent of their revenue comes from commercial customers on a dollar basis. What's also happening is that, obviously with the drop in revenue, you've had a drop in volume, and so what's driving the cost increase for the following year is a combination of costs going up and the volume dropping. A large proportion of their costs are fixed costs, so therefore as your tonnage drops, the rate goes up per tonne. The estimate is that, and these are very rough calculations done on the back of an envelope, but not that we're allowed to have envelopes or cigarette packets. At lunchtime was that the impact would be around about three hundred and fifty odd thousand dollars on either reduced dividend, which would then have an impact on the rates. That would be about a point two five of a percent of a rates increase, roughly, off the top of my head. So that could either be done by plugging that shortfall, by putting the rates up slightly higher, or else Ian and his team would have to look at the costs, or trying to grow volume, which might mean actually bringing more waste into the city. Because I guess one of the conflicts you have when you run a tip is you have this waste minimization strategy, I'm scared to look over that side of the room. You've got a waste minimization strategy, yet you've got a tip that actually requires volume, and you've got this quite a big conflict. So I think that's probably all I can say, and I'd really be rather be sitting over there right now.
It's weird, questions.
And just to cover off, so the options are, if you look at the per-tonnage fees, I suppose, if you decide to agree with recommendation one, then that will provide us, the modelling says that that will give us a better budget position, we won't have that deficit, there's some question around the size of that. If you decide not to put the tonnage up, in discussion with Ian, a portion of that calculation is based on the two hundred and fifty vehicles that were weighed coming across the weighbridge. Those, by definition, are some of the smaller vehicles. So it is a question of whether that is, I suppose, representative of all the large commercial vehicles that might also come in. So potentially there's a slight skewing there. So, but given that sixty three percent of vehicles would be better off with the per-tonnage rate, by definition, if we wanted to reduce our potential budget exposure, going for option two, whereby the fees are adjusted, a greater granularity in the fees, and sticking with the one thirty, eighty dollars and one ten per tonne that was consulted on, would reduce the potential budget loss for fourteen fifteen. Because the per-tonnage rate, by definition, sixty three percent of vehicles will be better off, so therefore it will impact. So if you're concerned about the impact on the budgets, and we don't want to put it up to one forty five tons per, one forty five dollars per tonne, then minimizing the budget impact would be by way of not installing the weighbridge for this year, and giving a greater granularity in the fees, and using the per-tonnage rate that was consulted on.
And what would be the impact of not redirecting the hundred and ten thousand within the capital budget at the landfill? Would that have any impact at all?
Yeah, so the third part is, and Ian and his team would need to manage the solid waste budget within their current budgets, which would pose the question of that hundred and ten thousand dollars being carried forward possibly into an operational carry forward for fourteen fifteen. To try and reduce the potential loss in fourteen fifteen in the shortfall. So one option is to say to Ian, look, we're not going to put the fees up, you need to manage that. There are two potential ways of, the impact of introducing a weighbridge or not introducing a weighbridge does have an impact then on the potential shortfall, because one will give us more revenue than the other.
Right. I'm going to do two things, I'm going to open up questions, but I would like, if possible, for the options that you have refined that are different from what's here to be somehow written up, or, because I'm, I think I've, I think I've got the hang of it, but I'm not sure that we've all got the same hang of it.
It means appendix one had to be.
Councillor's happy to do, just ask some questions, but at the same time, the staff could just get those up. So councillor Lord, you had your hand up.
Okay, yeah. My question, Ian, how did you decide that your budget is not being met? Because I was under the impression when we had a discussion on it a month or six weeks ago, that the idea was to try and recover one hundred and thirty dollars per every cubic metre in the pit. So is it, how do you identify that you're not making budget? Is it because you survey and realise you filled in more cubic metres than what you've charged for? Is that how you identify the shortfall?
No, it's the tonnage, when that material in the transfer station pit gets weighed over the weighbridge, so it changes from the volume assessment at the booth to a tonnage gets weighed and goes into the landfill, and then we know what tonnage has been put in the, we know the money that's been collected for the waste going into the pit. And then we get the tonnage of what's been.
So you don't physically weigh everything going into the pit at the moment?
No, we weigh what comes out of the pit, when it's put into the big container.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah. But the actual, the landfill at the back, where a lot of people are just taking stuff up and dumping it?
They go over the weighbridge. Anything that goes to the tip face has been put over the weighbridge.
Oh, so everything that goes there at the moment is accounted.
So it's generally the big commercial vehicles?
Yep.
Are the ones that go up to the tip face? All the other ones, small, even small commercial vehicles come into the transfer station as well?
Okay, that's right.
Councillor McTavish, did you have a question now, or do you want to?
Well, I thought I, if you're getting the options written up, then that's fine. I guess the question that I have and might be answered once it's in front of me is in relation to extending what is effectively the status quo for another year. Is it anticipated that we will have a budgetary loss on that basis if we simply extended as-is currently for another year?
Based on the figures we've got, you'd have to say yes, so.
So another six hundred down on budget?
Not necessarily. The issue you've got to look at is that the revenue's down six hundred, but there's some variable costs in there. So that's when we talked about earlier, that Ian said four six seven was the impact on revenue, and once you take out the variable costs, that's likely to be around about the three eighty. So at this stage, you say, everything else being equal, we'd be losing three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Are there options for them to try and save some more money, or, dare I say it, particularly to yourself, increase the volume into the tip? Yeah, there are some opportunities there. Because what's happened is that in the current year, my understanding is that they've lost a customer who was quite significant, which is one of the reasons they've got a variance.
Is that customer ourselves in terms of sludge, or are you referring to another customer?
Another customer.
An external customer.
Don't know, sorry.
They've gone to the competitor landfill, so.
And in terms of the discussions that occurred over the lunch period, did any of them include, or did you source information on what the competitor is charging, and how that might relate to the proposed rise in fees?
Councillor Wilson.
The unfavorable six hundred thousand has been factored into the counts at the end of the financial year already, I presume, as an unfavorable.
So say that, Ian.
That six hundred thousand unfavorable at the moment has already been factored into the carry forwards, neutralized some of the carry forward, I presume already, it's not going to be a loss at the end of this financial year.
Well, in terms of the budget, there's a revenue deficit, there's also reduced expenditure, so the net solid base position is still looking okay at the moment.
Okay.
In terms of the net position.
Okay.
We need to, we need to look at the net position, there is, we can focus on revenue, but if our revenue's dropped because of reducing volume, then our expenditure's also dropped. It's not a one for one, and in the budgets, there's also some other things that have impacted on our expenditure favorably, so each year it's a net position.
Okay. Grant, your consideration is relatively on a small quantum of information that you've been, that's come up, as to costs, it's two hundred and fifty cars, I mean, which with all respect is not necessarily indicative and not particularly scientific the way it's been carried forward. I'm just wondering if we take the lead that councillor McTavish has suggested, we should actually be either resourcing or requiring staff to do some really good work on surveying, because we actually should have the right to tell everyone they're going to go over a weighbridge on any particular time, that we require that information, I would have thought. And if it's, if the staffing, if we can staff it so that we can have and do that sort of survey work, then we will have a much better analysis to work on, because I have to say that I'm really nervous by the quality and the quantity of the facts we have got for us. Would that, I mean, would that give you more confidence if we did four weeks a year, not all together, in spring, summer, autumn and fall, to get that sort of quality of data?
The better the information, the better the decision you can make, or the more informed decision you can make. So if we had more information, I'd encourage it.
Councillor Thompson.
Technical question. We are able to change the rates during the year, notwithstanding that we've set them as part of an annual plan, aren't we?
Okay, it seems to me what we need is the options and the implications of each one, both in terms of shortfall or surplus, and effect on rates increase now, and how the carry forward affects that.
In consistency with our Waste Management and Minimization Plan.
What does that mean?
I think what I'm hearing is that, with regard to that, is that even if we, even if we increased the commercial dumping, tipping from commercial sources, it wouldn't necessarily exceed what we've had up till now with more customers. So basically, in some ways, it would be just going back to status quo. That's why we really need these clearly laid out with the implications, because we're trying to keep about two options here and maybe two more options there in our heads, and compare them.
Can we also have, if we're going that far, the implications if we, for when we fill up this landfill? I mean, if part of the problem is that we're not, we're not using so much landfill, you know, and our aim is to actually not really have one, it may be that, sorry, it may be that in five years' time, or whenever this one runs out, we don't need to do so much. So can, just can we factor in forward where it's all going?
That's, dare I say, beyond the scope of this current question, which is about next year's fees. There's a bigger question that still needs to be answered, but we would struggle to deal with that in any way in terms of these, these fees.
Can I, can I say, councillor, that we've had three hour workshops on that question alone, and not come to any?
I thought I could just pick up the answer from Jenny, but she's just started.
Sorry, it's too hard. Yeah, so what I was going to suggest is that we lay this matter on the table, there's no motion in front of us, so we're not in the middle of anything. Let you, let the staff at least come back with some clear, written up options, they don't need to be screeds, I just don't think council's in a position at the moment to make comparisons. And we can go on with some other issues, and then pick it up later in the afternoon. Okay. So councillors, while that's been handled, we're going to return to the decision sheet, and the way we're going to deal with this, rather than moving through and ringing up whoever the manager was for the, for the one line that we, that we've arrived at, we're going to get managers who deal with it, group managers, and one at a time, and we'll go through the whole decision sheet and do everything that that group manager's responsible for, and then bring the next group manager in. So we will be, we will be jumping around, but Jane will direct us where to jump, and how high, how high we went to jump. And Mick, Mr Reese, welcome. We've been waiting for you.
Glad to be of service.
Right. We start at, as all good stories should, at the beginning, page one, Aquatic Services. And we'll just move through. And we'll just move through.
Councilor Wilson.
I, I've just foreshadowed a motion about the aquatic services, which I've run past Tony, um, but not, sorry, you Mick. Um, and it's, have you got it there?
Yep.
It's, I think the two parts required here, albeit I've confirmed the thirty thousand, um, which may not be necessary. But I think we need to have a policy decision to go with the Tyre Community Facilities Trust and to look at what that relationship is going to be about. So it's what I've tried to do in the motion.
Okay, is, so you're moving that?
I'm having that.
Second councillor laws?
Yeah.
Appropriately.
Yep.
Yeah, no, but I just wanted to get something out there to en, enable debate discussion.
That's good, so we'll, we'll just put the, the motion to the, to the side and open it up for questions around all the aquatic, um, services issues and then we'll come back to the motion. So councillor Cal.
I've got a question, not of Mick, but of, of the proposer of the, I don't know what the partnership agreement's all about. Those words needing to be used in there because?
Yes, um, the thirty thousand dollars was to go to a community trust, we haven't identified that trust, we haven't been clear as to what we require that trust to report on to use that thirty thousand dollars and this motion.
What? Why not, why not just accept the offer of them to investigate the loca, location, I mean, a partnership agreement? As the mover knows herself, it's a very specific thing and this doesn't look at all like a partnership to me.
I, I actually had MOU originally and I'm not quite sure why I changed it, but, um, have you, MOU, whichever, to investigate? I'm happy, I wasn't thinking of it in that legal sense, sorry.
I think just an agreement and will form the right option.
The, the idea of partnership was that there will be some staff or an MOU, that there will be some staff work still required to assist this, whoever we give this job to, and I'm hoping that it isn't saying that we'll stand here and watch you do it and then it will come back. Okay.
So further, further questions, councillors, um, on any of the aquatic, um, facilities services? Councillor McTavish.
Well, I've got two questions, um, I'm not sure whether Mick's the right person to be asking this or whether it's Tony or Sue. Um, but the, the offer has been made by this Tyre Community Facilities Trust. Um, to staff have confidence that this community facilities trust, um, would be in a position to, um, do this work, because I think that's ultimately what, uh, they've come to us with an offer and that's really great and they've clearly got a track record in terms of developing a playground. Um, but I think, um, it was a big step up from a playground to a, um, aquatic complex and, um, yeah, I, I guess it seems to me quite a, quite a big jump.
Well, um, sorry.
Don't all speak at once.
No, uh, my only experience with the Tyre Community Facilities Trust is I think playing when I was on the community board, you know, the staff there. More recently at the, uh, the annual plan public meeting that was at, uh, Moskew, uh, where the community trust, uh, turned up and talked about their plans and how they were looking to effectively change the trustees that are on that trust to reflect the fact that they were looking to move to this role as opposed to their previous role and they were looking for, as I recall, nominations from the community, for people to put their hands up that might have the necessary skill set for that. So whether the trust that was involved with the playground, is the trust would be involved with the Moskew pool discussions going forward, I'm not sure. Um, but certainly I think, uh, the original thought that we'd had around that trust was, um, certainly having the right people on that trust becomes critical, both in terms of understanding the Moskew community and also the fundraising and other things, so that would be pretty dependent on their ability to, I think, to attract good trustees.
Councillor, councillor Thompson.
Yes, I was going to say much the same thing, having talked to, um, to get a little bit of information myself. Um, my understanding is that if we approve the money, that this is, this is more like a, um, uh, a, a legal vehicle, but the trustees and the expertise that might come in may be, may be different people and I'm aware that there are some other people who that they're talking with, um, in that regard. And, and who I understand, um, may well be prepared to do so.
Hmm, okay. And in terms of, um, I mean, I appreciate the intent of this motion, I, for me, one of the really critical things is that this trust understands the extent to which, or the, the lack of the extent to which there is any provision for DCC contribution in budgets, capital contribution. And I wonder whether we need to actually note that, um, note that the council note that there is a exclusive of the four hundred.
We didn't do that the cycle way on the peninsula the other day, I don't know why we would do it for any other project.
Well, either in question time or in, or in discussion.
So the, the question is whether, um, it would be appropriate for us to note that, I suppose, or whether staff's view is that that is implicit in the information that has been provided to the trust to date.
Okay, can I suggest that you hold that until we, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that all the questions around aquatic services have been asked and then keep, hold that and then that'll come in to either amending the motion or not. Councillor Thompson.
Well, I have another question, but I understand that, I think councillor Wilson has drafted also a potential motion with regard to, um, the, I think, yeah, the, the swimming, the, the, the swimming lanes for the, for the club?
Yes, but I saw it in the separate question. No, no, he wants all questions now, not all the motions. Yeah.
No, no, what I want to do, I've noted that that, that's been moved and seconded, but I do want to clear up any, uh, we could deal with this, we can either deal with this first or we can deal with all the questions involved in aquatic services. In some ways it doesn't matter, but I, I was hoping you'd all question to have a bit of. If councillors would prefer to deal with this motion, then we can, but. Right, que, questions on aquatic services, councillor Noon then councillor Hall.
Yes, mine relates to the.
Right, councillor, councillor Hall.
Thanks, Mr McTavish, I have no idea whether I was supposed to be asking this question or not, but it's about the Moskew, it is about the Moskew proposed Moskew facility. I just wondered, given the substantial amount of, uh, private funding and community funding that's going to go into building it, what influence we will have in terms of, um, various council policies for that facility, be they around energy efficiency or be they around accessibility? Will we have any leverage over this facility, given the way that it is going to be funded?
Uh, excuse me, the, um, the original thinking, uh, was that the council put a thirty thousand dollar seed funding to, uh, a trust of some description that would then look at the questions that are put up there. We've always anticipated though that, uh, the Aquatics Facilities Manager would have be an integral and key advisor into that. Decisions about what pool might be built, the nature of it, all those things, there's actually been quite a bit of work done around that in terms of the investigations that's been done. Uh, we weren't anticipating that the trust would suddenly do a whole of that rework. Uh, and on the basis that if they came back with a proposal, it would have to be one that would then come back to this council for acceptance, because if they're looking at building a, a pool facility, uh, out of trust raised funds and operating the pool facility as a trust, that's a different equation if they're looking to fund a facility that then the council builds and then takes over. So there's a, there's a mix of different options there, but we certainly saw that, uh, Aquatic Services would have, um, a very heavy and key hand in terms of that advisory around the nature of pools and other things, and that the focus was more around the fundraising than, I suppose, um, the design and construction of a pool. Um, I do wonder though in terms of the proposed, uh, amendment up there, because it does talk about location, design, staging and funding. That does cover the broad ambit of that, um, and whether that is, that's what, we've done a lot of work as part of the Mos, the, yeah, the, um, Aquatic Facilities Working Party that identified a range of options for potential Moskew pools, it did look at size, um, extent, uh, energy costs, operational costs, all those sorts of things. So we would see that as being, um, a key point, what we didn't cover off was location for how that would be funded.
Councillor Benson.
Just, uh, in the context of the discussion we had this morning about potential liabilities, I think it's important to acknowledge here that rather than being so-called drop dead money, this thirty thousand is actually a come alive money, this is going to ensure that this issue comes back to beat us to death, because the first thing the trust is going to do as well as attracting wonderful corporate sponsors and, and other benefactors who will fund such a great facility for Moskew residents and others, there will be a number of approaches to the DCC for the city to do its fair share by the, the poor benighted residents of Moskew and elsewhere, so, um, this isn't going to go away and then, and, and we need to be very mindful of the fact that, uh, while when we had the original discussion, there were a number of people and I think councillor Thompson in particular who, um, alerted us to the, the need not to raise community expectations about this issue, that's exactly what we've done. Uh, and you can bet your boots, you're going to get another thirty thousand dollars worth of raised community expectations out of this and we'll have to face the consequences, sorry.
Thank you, Morris. Now.
I never called you and me.
Um, if there are no further questions on any other issue, then let's take this, pick this up. It's been moved and seconded, I'm happy to have any more questions on this or I'm happy to go into discussion on this, councillor Noon, you heard it, I know.
You wish, just following up on what councillor McTavish said about just reminding the wider community, including the trust, that we have no funding in our long-term plan for Moskew Pool, I think that is, I think it's important we say that, and the other aspect that I think is also important to say is that the current facility will be maintained at this point in time, so just remind them, we're not going to completely ignore them. They have got a facility at the moment there and council aren't pulling back from that, so I just think that's important to actually note both of those methods.
So, so thank you, can I ask the mover and seconder whether they would be happy to include that as a se, uh, third line effectively? Uh, the two, two issues that at the moment, it's just noted that there's no funding in the long-term plan, there's no capital funding in the long-term plan, but um, alongside that, council is not intending to pull back from maintenance of the current pool in any way.
That's what, that's the. Even if it's noted under those.
That's the intention, so that's the intent of what you, you and councillor McTavish are suggesting. And I'm, um, asking mover and seconder.
Yeah.
I, I'm not, I'm not unhappy about it, but I'm not quite sure that it's needed in the context of we haven't done it to anyone else, that's all. When, when, when you suggest.
If I could just explain where I see the point of difference, I mean, maybe it's better during debate, but the, in terms of what, what we asked in terms of the cycle way, that was within, we asked staff to go away and do some work in terms of seeking whether or not it could be done within existing budgets. So I think that's different from this situation. And, and the reason why I flag up the concern is because the first email that I received from this trust, whose ambition I, I do applaud, was, um, one of the very first lines in that email was, um, let's get some community enthusiasm around this to convince the DCC to put money in the budget. Now, that's all very well and maybe we do need to have a conversation about that, but I just think that it's important that the community understand the very, very limited capacity and the complete current absence of money around that and I'm just, that email really gave me cause for concern that it's not clear to the, to, to the people that are stepping into the role, roles associated with this trust, that's all, um, that's, yeah, I, I just, it's for clarity purposes rather than, and I think councillor Noon's balancing that with the commitment to the existing facility, I think is a really good point. And, and putting in the.
Could we, in word, maybe that we, we'll be giving it continued priority above other projects then, just to balance it even more, because that's a problem.
Clearly we can't, so the, the question is, are you, the mover and seconder are happy to have this, we're going to, it could be a consequential motion, it doesn't need to go in, but I'm, we just need to know whether it's going in or not.
Well, I think Chris has got some other changes up to go up here as well.
Look, we're just, um, it. No, I, I wonder whether, um, the prudent approach might be to invite the Tyre Community Facilities Trust to work with us to pull up, pull together a proposal and bring it to council. Um, uh, in the absence of any process to go out to the community to say, would any of you like to volunteer, does anybody have the skill set and that kind of thing, we, we've got a group who, who, um, who have pulled themselves together and are very keen, um, but issues such as pool design are generally not best carried out by an enthusiastic community group unless they have a particular skill set and I don't know that in this case. Um, so I'm not, certainly not meaning to be disparaging, but I wonder if the sensible thing is to invite them on your behalf to work with staff to pull together a proposal to do this work and then we bring back that, that back to council for approval. Then you get to see laid out what can be done for what, for how much, by whom, with what skill set.
Can I ask if the motion on the board quickly, second?
Um, it, it, it gives them an offer to enter into an agreement, uh, rather than says, work with us to put in a proposal back to the council, here's the agreement, uh, um. This sounds like we're committing to an agreement to do the work in the absence of looking and seeing what that work might be, whereas what I'm suggesting is perhaps what we, what you might want to offer is for the group to sit down, work with staff and come up with a proposal that we then put back to you and if you're happy with it, then that's what goes ahead. At the moment, it's an unknown agreement, you're committing to an unknown agreement without knowing what's in the agreement, which is always just a little bit risky.
Intent to enter then, please.
Sorry.
With the intent to enter into an agreement. Um, I'm sorry, what we may end up having is five other groups turning up because you know, at some stage we need to give some certainty to the process and let them start doing this, this is the problem. They've been waiting in a bayant saying they're ready, they're wanting willing and we're not giving, otherwise they'll wind up. That's what you may lose this trust, which is was going to wind up with, and, and, and not be there. And they've put their hand up and I think you need to give them some certainty to get the work done and to be able to bu, build on the momentum rather than stop it, that's the problem.
What, what this, what the wording of this needs to do is address the issues that the chief has raised, but also I'm conscious that it needs to be consistent with what we put in the original motion about offering the thirty thousand to the board. And I, I don't, I, I don't know whether it's inconsistent or not, but we, we've, we've, we've got a, we've had a, we've passed a motion, we've put thirty thousand into the draft plan with a certain offer around it and here we're writing this and what this says has to be consistent with what that says. Councillor Benson.
Just a mechanical suggestion, how about starting with two? And, and rewording it to say something like that the council enters into discussions with the Tyre Community, um, Trust with a view to reaching an arrangement to do that and then subsequent to that, you've got one. Because unless you come to some agreement about it, you're not going to give them the thirty grand. So how about that?
Right, now, could you, I, I have a form of word, I have a, well, who wrote it then?
I just.
Your worship.
Your worship?
Your holiness, your whatever.
The council enter into discussions with.
I have a form of word.
If, if number two were to say that council accepts the offer of the Tyre, Tyre Community Facilities Trust to engage with council and determine terms of reference and areas of responsibility for both the trust and council.
It's great, it's great.
Thank you.
It's not reasonable.
What I suggest is that we give Jenny time to get this up on the screen and then we've got something we're all on one page. Right. Can I just, um, explain to councillors, um, Jenny has found this line in the draft annual plan, or someone did, who takes credit for it. But the line in the draft annual plan was that provision of a budget of up to thirty thousand to a community-owned trust to investigate the establishment, ownership and operation of a new Moskile Pool facility. So that alleviates my concerns of our consistency with this. Councillor Thompson's come up with this third.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Do you want to put it first and then one comes through? Right?
Then one, transpose one. Right. Um, now councillors, I'm going to start afresh. There's the, god.
Fresh?
Starting fresh.
They certainly are.
Took it literally.
Just that while you're waiting, we're going to have to change the wording of the short of it because that does need to be con- consequent to the satisfactory agreement, doesn't it?
Councillor.
For fear of dragging this on any further, um, I wonder whether, I mean, it's been referred to as both an aquatic facility and a pool at various times. And now it's, yeah, it's a pool in this example. Um, I don't, I don't mind which one it is.
It could be aquatic facility.
Just get rid of it for a Tyree area pool and just for annual plan. Or pool required, investigated.
Because it's not referred to at all in number one.
No.
In, in number one, you need to have a reference to, um, aquatic facility.
Aquatic facility, yes.
Yeah. Councillor, to get councillors to refer, you have a possibility.
Your worship.
In, um, the planning for-
No, your worship, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I would like to see a reference to the initial wording that we, because it's, I think, and councillor Wilson had it in her initial motion, because it's both the operation and the capital investment and the operation of the, that needs to be considered and-
So for the last bit of that original-
Yeah, the last bit of your initial motion.
Location, design.
Yeah.
So it's all in capex, you don't want to treat all the three bits of drum. We're talking about the initial-
Sorry, with respect, I, I, with respect, my learned colleague, that, that, in a sense that falls out of an earliest, earliest stage, because if, for example, they were of a mind that they wished to own and run, that would have a completely different implication to if they wished to own and hand over. So I, I think until, until you have an opportunity to have those discussions, it kind of, it works, I, I understand you have to do it, but I'm not sure that you can define it at this end of the process.
I agree entirely, but I think that the reference, so determine terms of reference and areas of responsibility for both the trust and the council for the purposes of delivering on the, um, scoping of the design, blah, 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 and that, that list of things that said at the end of our original motion. Because at the moment, we could be convening a conversation about goodness knows what. The lean.
Look, the reality is that what we put out for consultation mentioned the establishment, ownership and operation of a new Moskile Pool facility. That's what it said. Use those words. So, like, we, we, we have to be consistent, so, for both. So I would add on, I suggest adding on both the trust and coun- uh, areas of responsibility, both the trust and council in, uh, in investig- uh, in investigating the establishment, ownership and operation of a new Moskile Pool facility.
I'm wondering, most of you might not be sense that, um, introductions were impossible. It's just that, um, in terms of expectations, it would be much better to make quite clear that, that it's not too, uh- The pool could be built before we get the wording right. A long shot.
Let's, let's get it up and see what's missing. So. A new, of a, of a proposed rather than new.
Of a proposed.
That takes care of councillor Wilson, plaid on to you. Now, I'm happy to have any additions, but what you- Right.
I'm happy to move, so-
Second to have you, that's right. Well, I will now start afresh, um, and I'll invite the mover to speak to this now. I think you've got a good idea.
We just don't believe what she does, Mr Thompson. We need to somehow link the two, subsequent to these discussions, that we're not going to confirm the thirty unless there's some agreement reached, are we? We're just going to put them thirty and have a chat.
It should be Moskile Pool, second line now.
And they're depending on the outcome of these discussions, thirty grand being granted.
Well, my, my, my reading is that the thirty thousand, you just confirm that it's in the annual plan, not that it's tagged to any particular group.
The, the resolution was that it was to go to a group to do this work, which is why we have to confirm a group.
Specifically mentioned in the, in the consultation document-
Yep.
-that it was to be given to a trust.
You bet your boots that all my social thinks it's going to get hold of thirty thousand. So don't tell me who's going to hold it, council or some budget holder's going to put that little bit.
Yes.
Can we just say that the council confirmed?
All right, but that's the case, you better put that in.
Right, councillor Wilson, you're the mover, so how would you read that?
Um, I have got that the council confirms the thirty thousand in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen annual plan as per the consultation document. And therefore it has that trust and everything else built into it. And that's part of that discussion that is beyond ongoing. Yeah. Um, I thank everyone for your very collegial way of putting this motion together. Um, first up, um, I'm putting this up as much, because I, in the same way as the ethical policy, is that it is a resounding result of submissions. And, um, I'm not going to live or die on whether it passes or not. I think it's about giving the community, uh, ensuring that they've been heard and ensuring that, um, we've listened by giving them the grace to put the motion up in the first place. Um, I will be supporting it on the other hand because I believe there is a real need for this facility for the purposes of a huge demand for swimming in Dunedin. I see it as a measure of life-saving, um, as in people need to learn to swim. The city is at the moment dependent on a substantial number of pools that we have no control for on and which could very well change, um, with access to swimming pools being reliant very heavily at the moment with the Ministry of Education. If any of those go, um, that could put us in dire straits, um, with provision of pools and even under greater, um, greater demand for us to do something. I think it's much better to be proactive and start addressing those issues, missing, um, what we can do. Having sat on the Aquatic Services, um, working party, I have to say, I don't think I'm overstating that demand or need at all. Um, having also been on the Moskile, uh, on the Middle March Pool Committee, I know that they take a lot, it takes a lot of money, but the communities can do it much more cheaply sometimes than councils. And that I don't, I think we've got a group here who are prepared to say, "We want to get this up and running." We'll look at synergies and ways of making it cheaper. They're very open to looking at commercial partnerships that might save a lot of operational costs. And while we've got a group keen to do that, I would be very sad that we didn't, um, encourage them by, uh, supporting them with what is very, very little money.
Councillor, would you, do you want to speak to it now or do you-
No, I'm, I'm okay at the moment.
Okay. Councillor Stott.
I, I can support these motions, um, but I think I still have a degree of concern that follows on from what councillor McTavish has put very well on a couple of occasions, that actually there is no money in our long-term plan. So I'm just a little bit concerned that we keep putting resolutions like we have for the South Dunedin Library that raise community expectation that then gets dashed. Um, so I would be more comfortable if it made, if there was some reference to, to the two things that I think are important. One, that there is currently no funding in the long-term plan. And secondly, that really the reason we're setting up this trust is to try and, in my opinion, is to try and galvanise the community into an understanding of what it costs and get them to understand what it actually is they want. And then to provide community funding to enable the project to proceed at all. So right now, with no funding, there's nothing in, in our long-term plan, there is no way forward. So I think it's great to have them involved in the design or whatever else, but the bottom line is, the indication was there was community funding available. The trust, by being independent from council, has the opportunity to apply to funding bodies for funding. And if they're successful enough, that pool of funding may make it possible for us as a council to proceed with putting something in a long-term plan and getting the job done. But until then, there is no funding.
Councillor Thompson.
Um, because I definitely support this and, and I moved the original thirty thousand dollar grant, um, with that in mind. I think what we need to look at, I totally accept that we don't have the money, that's why we're looking at it this way. But there is, that, that doesn't mean to say that we can't contribute to this process. We have staff who have already done a great deal of work on aquatic facilities. We have, um, uh, concepts and plans that can, that, that in themselves will save a great deal of money to anybody starting afresh. We have the ability, if we choose to, to, um, assist with, uh, specific expertise through the process that might otherwise have to be paid for. And whilst, of course, there is a cost to us in doing that, it's one that we can probably, if we do it right, we're within our existing infrastructure costs. We have, um, the, uh, ability, if we choose, to assist in the area of things like consents, um, and building, um, building consents and resource consents and things like that. There are lots of things that we can do as our share that won't necessarily involve having to rate the rate payers. And that's why I think this is a, a methodology for proceeding. Um, we're certainly aware that there, we, we also have land available, which we could make available. Now, it may not, may or may not be where the trust decides that they want to put a pool and they may have access to other offers of land. Um, but these are all options that are ways of, of helping in kind. So that's why I believe this is the way to go. And I look at other things in the city. I look at, um, for example, the, the, the mountain bike tracks. There's hundreds of thou- of thousands of, if not millions, of dollars' worth of what would have been costs that have been able to be achieved through the enthusiasm, the volunteerism, if that's a word, um, of just people who want to see a job get done. So that's, that's the opportunity I think we're providing. If the community is able to step up to that, then, um, I think we will end up with a facility out there. And if they're not, well then, that's the way it'll be.
Um, can I, oh, come on, councillor McTavish, can I just, for the sake of clarity and consistency, read what was in the shortened version of the consultation document. Moskile Pool, seed funding of thirty thousand is proposed to be made available to a community trust that would work in partnership with the DCC and the local community to investigate the development of a new Moskile Pool. The LTP has no capital funding for a new pool, but setting up such a trust would allow the community to assess what it needs and push forward the plan. So I think that is completely consistent. What we've got here. Councillor McTavish.
Um, well, just, and for the purpose of consistency, I, I, I'm guessing that three has been accepted by the mover and seconder, or has it just gone up as a potential conclusion? I, I'm not sure where it came from.
We didn't put it in passenger services motion, but, you know, obviously it's an inconsistency that I'm just noting.
There was, the mover and seconder indicated that they were prepared to have that, so that's why.
And, well, I, and, and for the purpose of consistency, my suggestion would be that you insert the word capital, um, yeah, I mean, I guess we don't have anything for operations either, but, so maybe, maybe it's fine. I, I can support this, um, but only because of three. And the, the reason for that is, um, that I, I think, it's for the, it's for the reasons that councillor Thompson states, this needs to be community-driven. I mean, I think, um, the difference with something like passenger transport is that, um, it's not something that can be community-funded, that I'm aware of. Um, so, but for a new facility like this and the financial situation that we find ourselves in, it needs to be community-driven. And, um, I was really heartened by the energy that came to the table and spoke to us on that matter. And I really applaud the trust, um, and the, the people associated with the trust for, um, for the energy and enthusiasm. Um, but I think we need to be completely upfront with them about, um, the, the, our relative ability to contribute. And at the moment, that's not high. And, um, that, that's why I'm, I'm so keen to see three in there and why I'm grateful to mover and seconder for, um, accepting that change. Um, the, the thing that's been most difficult for me in the last twenty-four hours is fielding , um, very disappointed, um, quite angry, quite upset comments from members of the South Dunedin community who, um, as councillor Stain says, had their, had their, um, hopes raised, um, have continually had their hopes raised about, um, a facility in South Dunedin. Um, and in, in relation to that facility, the money was actually in the budget and it's been continually pushed out. Um, in relation to, um, this facility, there is not even any money in the budget. So I'm, I'm very keen that we are absolutely transparent with the community in terms of what we have to contribute. And councillor Thompson is right in that we have a lot in terms of in-kind information and potentially land and potentially lots of other things, but in terms of capital, we just don't have much. So, um, thank you to the mover and seconder for allowing me to vote for this motion by including three.
I would have, and it might sound like spitting hairs, but I would have preferred to use the words more closely aligned to what was in the, um, the consultation document which had within it, that we have no long-term funding, but it didn't make a separate, little "Just be aware that there's no money here." I'm aware that we've made several decisions or to be ratified sort of decisions in the last couple of days. And we're not telling other people that we're not likely to have any money for them on the whole in the way that we are doing here. And I'm particularly aware, um, with the passenger transport, um, discussion we were having this morning, that we are asking if we think we're going to take over the buses and provide, um, a better bus service, what that means is that that's partly going to be predicated on the fact that we're going to dump rate, more rating things on more Tyree people and other people who aren't using buses at all, because that's the only way a better bus service is going to come with no other changes. So here we are, sort of on the one hand, we're happy to cost a whole lot of people who are either rural or semi-rural or things more money in the rates and things, just quietly snicking it in here and there. On the other hand, whenever somebody wants something, we just remind them that we haven't got any money. So I think that the Moskile people are going to be really annoyed at the last thing. And I completely understand we've got no money. And the words in the consultation document were quite-
They were almost dead.
Uh, they weren't sort of laid out like that in the sense of it being a separate, "Just be aware that we've got no money," sort of in quite that way. Yeah, so, uh, anyway, I'm just saying that, that, that it will annoy them inordinately.
Can I clarify? Because the, the fact is that in the, it was written in paragraph form here and it just happens to be numbered here, but in fact it's a separate sentence and it says, "The LTP has no capital funding for a new pool, but setting up such a trust would allow the community to assess what it needs and push forward the plan." So that's quite clear.
Yeah, you see that? That I like. Rather than, "Please note, we've got no money for this," which is what we've got.
Councillor.
Thank you, your worship. Um, yeah, I, I, I support these three resolutions and, and on the basis that a hundred and fifty submissions on this topic have sent us a very strong message that we need to do something. So what I see this as doing is, as we all now know, is to provide seed money to galvanise the community effort to, and appetite for such a facility. And, uh, just as a way of being, putting on a sub-editor to have here, um, a proposed Moskile Pool facility equals a new Tyree area pool, but I'd just prefer to see one or other of those. And I think we, we decide- And I think we decided that should be the first proposed Moskew Pool facility. And the second, why are we not using that?
The second one's a different one, it's apparently a rather proposed one.
Number two. Just, uh, just repeat the, for consistency's sake.
Councillor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I too can support the three motions. I think it once again reinforces the signal to our communities that we're looking for partners to create a stronger, I suppose, a stronger community, a stronger city, where collectively we can achieve things, but on our own, we can't. And I think that's a really important message. And whatever happens in the future, and we hear about the possibility of, um, this pool development and whether there may be a model out there that would suggest that the community could run it, you know, in years to come, well, we've already got one of those examples within the city and it's the Hawkesbury Pool at the Hawkesbury Village, the old Cherry Farm Hospital. And that pool was gifted to the community, it's run by a community trust. It survives on a city council grant, but there are a group of volunteers that run that and the former councillor, Tony Parata, essentially spends hours and hours and hours on behalf of the community running that facility. But the reality is if you've got something worth keeping and operating for the community, it's amazing what comes out of the woodwork. And I think this is a signal for the Moskew, Tyree and Waiata community to actually show that partnership and that strength that they've got to carry on with us to achieve something pretty special. It may take, it may take a decade, but does that really matter?
Who speaks? Councillor.
Yeah, look, I would say, I'm obviously totally for this. I don't think the trust is in any doubt what it involves. I don't think the expectation is that they're going to be lone rangers and working by themselves. I'm expecting that they understand. And we can finalize all this with them, that they'll be working with guys like Mac and Tony to look at existing plans, look at existing reports and work together. But I think we've got an opportunity here when we think that perhaps twenty percent of the city's population live in the Tyree and the Moskew region. Um, it's an easily accessible area by two or three other major suburbs in Green Island and Fairfield. And they also reasonably grow the area, there's been a lot of growth around Fairfield. There's a, I mean, without a doubt, Moskew was the fastest-growing region in the city. And there's people that are prepared to work with this trust and behind this trust to raise some large quantities of capital. Very confident that they can raise large quantities of capital. And I think we should get behind this. I think not only that, that I'm thinking within two to three years' time, they might be sitting here looking at us and saying, okay, well, we've come halfway, we've got five or six million dollars. You come and look at the rest. And it may be at that time that there will be some headspace and there will be some time and we might be able to achieve something very special. And, um, look, I just think, as Andrew said, it's not, it's not a precedent. This is not the first group that's been prepared to work with council. But it's, uh, it's something that I think is very, very worthwhile pursuing. And I think that there's some very talented people being identified and behind the scenes are already working with those people. And I think we just need to run with that.
Um, well, I support, um, this. I think that the risks, people have, various councillors around the table have identified some of the risks in terms of, um, there being nothing in the long-term plan at all. And I suspect that the biggest one of the risks is if this trust is really, really successful and raises quite a lot of money quite quickly, as the Regent did a couple of years ago. And then we're put in a position where we do need to look quite hard. But, um, I think I'd rather be looking at it as a plus. If the community had been that successful, uh, then I would see that as a positive, not a negative, um, going forward. So, uh, I do see, I see this falling out of, um, two imperatives. Well, one, councillor finds itself in a position where it has no recourse to any more new debt or capital. Uh, but also a changing world where, as councillor Noon has mentioned, there is an increasing need for, um, community council partnerships and there will be across a whole of things. And I suspect that, um, community ownership in quotes, uh, will be a lot, um, healthier for that. It won't be seen as the councils and therefore it's just an expectation on various facilities. It's ours, and the community. So, um, in the real sense of the word, so I can support this. Councillor.
Um, thank you. Um, I'd just like to point out that we've had various discussions about safety and I just don't want people to forget that for some people, this is about safety in water. We live on an island and if people don't have access to water to learn to swim. I want to put that quite clearly as one of the drivers that I'm looking at in this project. The other driver, and just thank you for the lead from councillor Noon, is to give my experience from my community where in the last, um, year, we have had to do substantial upgrades to our pool and that money has come in with just a matter of asking from within the community, not from anyone else. Equally, in the last five years, I think over seventy-five thousand dollars has been spent on our pool on upgrading it. They're big sums for a very small community, but it is doable if you've got people really positive and really wanting to do it. And what my reluctance at the last term is that, on the last number three, is that it is like a handbrake. It's showing, these people were utterly optimistic and passionate and want everyone to look at the world through what could happen, not what might happen. And that's the only reason, because I think they are really prepared to dream large and they want it to happen and they have shown in the past that they will make things happen. So that's why I've got quite a good lot of confidence in this community, the Moskew-Tyree community, to gel together and to make this thing happen. And I, um, they're very clear that they may have to come to this council with a proposal to fund any debt for some years in order to get through any hurdles. So they understand that reality and I just want them to be given a really positive message that, knowing that, that they will try and make everything work within it. In reality, they've got until November this year to come up with a proposal or it's another three years behind under the LTP. I think that that's a really, that in itself is the sort of time constraints that means that it will be the next LTP that they have that opportunity to advance. I think it's, um, they haven't got, I'd be very surprised if they can come within this, um, next six months to, with an LTP proposal. So I think that in itself is enough to give some of you, um, or to allay some of your concerns.
All right, I'm going to put it. Um, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carrie. Thank you. Now, is there anything else in aquatic services that we want to ask of Mac? Um, before we. Right, so on page twelve, councillors, we've finished with the Moskew Pool submissions and we move on to various other ones. There was a couple around suggestions for Sinclair. Different suggestions for Sinclair. Fees and charges. Have you got any? Councillor.
Um, Jared Collins, Whipwate Coast Community Board, and it's brought up later by Barry and maybe I'm conflicted, but it's just this idea that we have service-level agreements that are consistently given over with inflation and these ones aren't inflated. And I'm just pointing it out that that point has been submitted off.
Which?
That's, um, I think Jared Collins talked about. The second one, and Barry Williams talks about it later, I think. At which point, I'm just noting that someone may or may not want to move it. I'm raising the issue because it's a submission, but I'm now going to stand back because it's potentially unconflicted.
Yeah, well, I'm quite happy to raise, I mean, I was going to raise that anyway. And it pertains not only to pools, but also to things like museums and libraries and things like that. Bernie has addressed the libraries issue and his library part of it. But it's about the, the small amount of money that goes from our library budgets through to smaller library budgets and ensuring that they are inflation-adjusted. Um, I don't know whether staff wish to comment in relation to pools on that issue or whether one overarching motion. Do you want them separately in terms of, um, inflation-adjusted small grants to pools, inflation-adjusted small grants to libraries?
Um, for, for libraries, are you talking about, for example, the St Kilda Volunteer Library, where they get a grant from us?
Correct.
As opposed to our own, our own libraries? The museum, of course, got an adjustment this year. There was a deliberate decision to withhold the adjustment in previous years, but they got a two percent increase this year.
Not, not, not Toito, but, um.
Yes, yes, no, the Otago Museum got a two percent increase this year.
Not that one, I mean, um, Middlemarch Museum, Port Chalmers Museum.
Yes, and the interest, yes, that's right. And they take, they get a five thousand dollar a year out of the Toito budget, but they get staff support as well, which is automatically covered, of course. Um, yeah, look, and a high-level, I think a high-level submission that says staff to ensure that there's appropriate inflation or... Can we come back to you on that, on the best way to do that? Okay, thanks. Um, it's, if we, if we've made a department come to us with a zero percent adjusted budget and then we make them inflation-adjust other budgets, it can, uh, there's a difficulty there, so let's have a look.
The motion could be something like, when the relevant department budget is adjusted, that the grant is also inflation-adjusted.
Get grant, work on something and come back to you.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that. I think Bernie's comment was that that could probably be absorbed within, um, so in relation to the libraries. My rejection of the staff comment there was that that could be absorbed into the operational other chunk of his budget, but I guess that will be different for each department.
I think, um, the other thing that, um, um, community development managers just raised is, uh, when we, within the last two or three years, we have been trying to, on a departmental level, operate pretty much with a zero percent increase, aside from unavoidable debt servicing, insurance and so on and so forth. Um, uh, we used to have a, uh, in the service-level agreements, when we gave grants, used to also include for organisations that we made more generic grants and CPI adjustment. And a decision was made to take all of those out. Uh, so it seems to me that at this point in time, where the message is still, we still don't have any extra money. And we are still struggling to meet our base costs within the fiscal envelope that we've set ourselves. Um, then the same message that's going to our internal staff is going externally as well. Um, but it seems like we should look at all of those as a pool. But next year, next year's funding is tighter again than it is this year for a number of reasons, so.
So I guess the difficulty that I see is that those, some of those smaller organisations used to come to us for a civic grant, we transferred that from a civic grant into the relevant operational budget. That means that when they want to request an increase, there is no mechanism for them to do that via us directly. And so there is a need for us to have some mechanism by which that is negotiated or discussed. Um, so I'm happy to.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, let's have a look, let's have a look at it.
Councillor Noon.
Yeah, my point was just going to follow up on what the chief finance officer said, that maybe we just should be looking at fifteen, sixteen to try and deal with this CPI or inflation-proof grants for the small museums or whatever other grants that we need to review from time to time. So, no, I'm happy for you, sorry.
Councillor.
I'd sort of like the chief to have a wee bit more flexibility than that. And what I'd like to see is heading off in a direction where, when we had presented to us the draft annual budgets, that we were also presented with, um, the thinking that the chief had that thought about those particular grants, so as we could get back for the next annual round, something saying, these are the number of these that there are. This is what I have factored into my thinking for these and this is why. So as that we knew that they had been sort of actively thought about. I'm sure they are, I'm just saying it. I would prefer to give the flexibility to the chief to do that for them too.
Councillor Thompson. Any other points on, um, page twelve through, where does aquatic services end? So the issue that's been raised is the request from, um, the students, Tegu University Students Association to widen the entitlement to, uh, a, um, a ticket into a new pool to all students and not just, uh, full-time students. And then on page three of the memo that you got with all the extra information, there is some discussion of that. Page three of the. So it's page three of the supplementary information request. So it's a few pages in, because the first bit is four of that row. So supplementary information memo and then page three of that. So it appears to be a process issue with the university, um, which my understanding is we're on a pool catch, it's come, fixed, I'm saying, thanks for the hook.
It is only in so far as we decide that it is only available to full-time students. If we were to open that up, then it wouldn't be, that process issue of the universities, at the university's end would no longer exist.
All right, well, I'll come to councillor Thompson in a minute, but my question would be, so how many are you going to get free? If you just opened it up, probably not a great number. Councillor Thompson.
Well, I suppose that's part of the question that we need to understand. I always recall offering student discounts through my own store, which, um, I'll have to be careful here. The partner, one of the more wealthy people in Dunedin would come in regularly on a Friday night and insist on her student discount, um, for her part-time interest. So there is galling aspects as well. I think we do need to understand just what the size of the number is.
Councillor.
Um, well, I just wanted to understand the, um, why when we've got capacity issues, we're offering a discount at all and not limiting it to when there is capacity? Because it's giving a very fraught message, one way saying we've got huge capacity potentially. Um, the next one I'll be bringing up is Lindsay Day's mission. Um, where we're charging extra for professional swimmers who, we're proud to support when they're swimming at the Olympics or the Commonwealth Games and quite have to take the money off them every other day. I'm just wondering, what, is there a way of doing this that it ties into when it's low numbers, but not when there's high numbers?
Mac and I may not be the best place to answer that question, not being in terms of the operational pool. But, um, are you talking about an off-peak rate? Because at the moment, there is the, if you buy a season's pass, you can go any time that you like, by definition. I think if you're doing that, an off-peak rate cost to swim, is that what you're asking for?
I'm asking, what is the thinking way behind that actually philosophically? Why would you give a discount to a pool that is well-used, albeit there's students or not students or whatever? Wouldn't you be better to say, actually, we will discount rather than necessarily just to...
to students, to anyone at non-peak times? Isn't that a better message?
Well, that's a different question.
Well, I'm trying to get over that.
That hasn't been considered because it hasn't been asked before. I don't know the answer, sorry.
Sorry, the reason I'm trying to think that is we've got a problem here with administration of simplifying it potentially.
Well, there's, there may be two different points. So one is a student discount, there's an issue with that.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that there's been any consideration about an off-peak rate for swimming. But if someone gets a six-month, nine-month, 12-month, um, card, I'm not sure, again, how you could limit that to particular times, because by definition they tend to be frequent users. You come in at all times, the day and night, so. If you want to, I don't, I, I don't know that we've ever looked at an off-peak rate, if that's what you're suggesting.
In that light, can I focus this back on the submission, was specifically around in opening up the discount to all students rather than just, uh, full-time ones? Does anyone have, uh, and it would appear to me that we either make a move and confirm that, post, confirm that framework or, or, or say, no, we want to open it up, or we ask for more information about how many people would affect, so let's get that. councillor Lord?
Well, I would be prepared to move that it is. It seems to me, it seems to me an anomaly that, uh, just because, well, if the reason is that someone does summer school and then they get the discount away around, look, to be fair, I, I think there's such a, I mean, not a small percentage of our community, but at that age and stage in life, for a lot of those kids, probably a couple of dollars does matter. Doesn't seem to matter when they're spending money on grog at other times, but I, I think it's a, just an anomaly and I don't really see any, I don't have a problem with it. So I'd be prepared to move something, but I haven't got the abilities that some others have to write it up, so someone must propose that or second it anyway.
I'd like to go down to the, down the track of looking further into it, but I would say that I, I think with what I've looked into, that almost every student would be entitled to a community services card and that solves the problem because they have it, um, by decree that they're officially poor and therefore they're, anyone who's officially poor for whatever reason gets it and that sorts out the problems, they can just apply for one and almost all of them will get them. The second thing is that the, if we're giving people cheaper gym memberships, uni students have already got a gym, I don't particularly see why going up there is something that we're providing as a separate thing for, cheaper for students, not just generally. But again, to be consistent, the community services card thing would be my application, but I would move towards finding out more things about those issues.
councillor Thompson? councillor Hawkins?
There seems to be, I mean, there's two problems. Wait, I, I don't even, are we asking questions? I don't even, I don't even know anymore. I would, I would! I mean, there appears to be two problems and one, and I, and I have some sympathy to councillor Thompson's galling, that aspect of wealthy people claiming discounts, but if you were to apply that across the student population, I think you would, it would take in far more than your, um, mavens and their interest papers. Um, but if the real problem is the, the so-called ski pass problem where it's people who, you know, join for two days to get discount ski pass to current peak, I would, and surely the university would be able to tell us how big a problem, you know, they, they should know how many cards are in circulation and how many students are currently enrolled. Like, that, that doesn't seem to be something that would be too difficult to figure out if that is in fact the problem. I mean, the, the, the idea of expanding it to include part-time students is, I mean, as, as access to student allowances, particularly for post-grad students is slowly eroded. You have more and more people going back to studying, uh, part-time because they have to work part-time to fund, uh, their studies. And to say that they are then penalised further by not having access to the support that is off, they were offered by the city as full-time students seems to be penalising them again further. So while I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly open to us getting more information particularly around enrolment figures and such for the university, um, I, I certainly would be open to councillor Lord's pending motion to, um, to expand it. Oh, please do.
The university cares around approximately 21,000 students, uh, at full-time equivalent, so full-time student is about 18,500. Now, that was for last year, so it might be stopped, it will all be stopped a different issue. So there is a submitted portion to, uh, part-time students. The, the other thing you need to also be aware of is that the university students do have access to the Unipole Gym, uh, which is, um, down by the stadium, one of the facility. Um, and so I would be very surprised if they were wanting to use the German line for which probably would just...
Okay, so is, is anyone of a mind to...
I've got a question. A question? Well, the question is, if we took the advice that councillor Calvert's given us and take the given, which I think needs confirmation, that all students are entitled to a discount, they would get, sorry, a community service card, we would actually be doing two things by encouraging and advertising that, um, by, by them getting the discount, which is a concession which drops your costs markedly at the pool, but also we'd be fulfilling some of the wishes of Laura Black and her, um, and her submission of, um, making sure that we're getting everything out of the government that we can really, um, and entitlements. But, I mean, the, the community service card discounts are equally as good as a student discount in here.
Okay, there's a motion on board, I am not absolutely sure who's moved it.
Mike.
Moved councillor Lord, is there a second? Because this seems, councillor Wiley? Okay. I'll now open up discussion on the basis of this motion, which seems to be blend rather than an either-or.
Can I just speak? What we've taken out, what was already in the annual plan was the full-time student, so it's really qualifies, I, I think, um, there will be some students that don't hold a community services cap, but it doesn't mean that they cash rich. So I, um, I think all tertiary students should apply, so don't want to say too much more.
councillor Thompson?
Look, I, I, just based on grants numbers, I mean, if there were 2,000 part-time students, frankly, if 10% of them use the pool, it's 200. And apart from those, the people who weren't going to use it anyway, it's a bit more revenue rather than a bit less, so I, I don't see a problem with it, I support it.
councillor McTee?
Just to clarify from staff, if we extend it to all tertiary students, that eliminates the requirement for any presentation of anything other than their tertiary card?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think, I'm amazed to say, if you turn up with a student ID, a politic ID.
Actually, it doesn't necessarily, that wording, because we would be within, or our aquatic services people would be within their rights to say, show me your current tertiary student, not just that you have.
It's got to have a date on it.
An ID card.
Yeah, an ID card has a date on it.
No, yeah, but it's for this year when you were a tertiary student over the summer. So I'm saying that somebody could ask you whether you were still a tertiary student in August.
I have one question, and I'm not sure if staff can answer this, is this likely to have any significant effect by, of reducing revenue to the pool?
Okay, I think the fairest and, and clearest, if I can give to that, there will be some effect. Uh, it won't be significant, but it will be some effect. We have, uh, we have a review of revenue, work to do at the pool anyway. Uh, this, uh, what I will do is remove, as you can see from the staff comments here, the, uh, process was difficult. We will certainly remove that, uh, so there may be benefits in terms of efficiencies elsewhere.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? councillor Wilson?
I think it needs to be community services, comma, super gold, comma, or tertiary students ID card, please.
Apply upon presentation of a...
Dunedin tertiary students. Could I just? We don't want to come down to Walkman just to go for a swim. Right. We're in debate, are there any speakers that have had this vote, councillor Calvert? We haven't spoken, so unofficially.
I was just thinking that this doesn't address at all, um, our happiness or otherwise to provide, um, subsidised gym services when students already have, what, how to grant describe it, a flash modern new gym down on campus, but that's all right, if people are happy to use other people's money to subsidise that one too?
councillor Lord, you'll write a reply?
I'll just, uh, comment on that, I don't think it's a case of using other people's money to subsidise, it's, it's a lost opportunity cost, but it's not that it's coming out, we don't have to make it up out of the city budget, do we? It's just, uh, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't get too hung up on that.
Pay, really pay rights.
That's a fine word on that. Right, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carrie? Thank you.